Order the Public Health Safety Judiciary and Ethics Committee. Eileen, can we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Rory Wesley, Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, Alderman Catalano, Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Michael Smol. First item is I need an approval of the minutes of the meeting from October. October twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. We have a first and a second. Any questions? Eyes?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes would. That's passed.
Aye.
Ay yi yi. All right, the next item, report and recommendation. Chief, you want to run with that guy?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
So last week, the mayor wrote a letter from, from a company that was looking to move into town and possibly open a brew pub in the industrial park on Creel Drive. I'll introduce Wesley Brown in just a minute and let him kind of explain a little bit what's going on, but as you're aware, whenever there's a request for a new liquor license, we don't have any open licenses. Council would have to approve the opening of any licenses. Back in two thousand fifteen, when there was some revisions to the liquor code, there was a Class B that was added as a, as a class of license and that covered brew pub, which was for the issuance to a brew pub for the sale of beer manufactured and stored on the premises for consumption on premise and in packages for consumption off premise. There are, there were some caveats to the code when it was written back then was it was that the people did not have to consume meals, but that meals should be offered for sale. So there, if, if Mr. Brown can explain the concept of what he's looking for there, but if, if it did go forward, there might be, need to be some adjustments to that, just in the, in the language. We would work with the attorney to make sure that both types of things that would be acceptable to council would be included. So with that, I thought it'd be a good idea to have Mr. Brown here to kind of explain the concept that he's looking at. And so Wesley, if you want to take over, go ahead.
Let me go closer to the mic here. Thanks for hearing me tonight. So me and my sister, we have the goal of opening up a very small craft brewery somewhere here in the northwest suburbs. I grew up in Elk Grove, so I'm real close. The reason I like Wooddale is because it's not Cook County, if I'm being honest. And it's also my grandpa and my uncles have businesses in the Wooddale Industrial Park. I spent a lot of time over there as a kid and a teenager, so I'm pretty familiar with the area over there. So the plan for us is going to be completely family owned and operated. Me, my sister, and then my parents would help out, you know, when needed. We would be brewing onsite and then having a tap room similar, like a, like a pub for people to consume the beer onsite. We currently do not have plans to have a kitchen. I'm not a chef and I don't want to pretend to be, but the other, we don't have the capability with how small and scale we are to hire a serving staff and all of that that goes along with it. We will allow outside food to be brought in. We'll have menus for White Cottage and all the other restaurants around and let people bring in their own food for onsite consumption, if that's what they'd like to do. We also plan on partnering with a local shelter. We're big dog lovers. We're naming the brewery Top Dog Brewing Company. All of the beers are named after family dogs that we've had over the past thirty something odd years I've been alive. So we'd like to partner with a shelter to host maybe an adoption event, or at the very least, we'll use the spent grain. It's a byproduct of the brewing process. It's grain that's been used. And we'll bake those into dog biscuits and give them to the shelter and stuff like that. We'd like to partner with a shelter. Our goal is to have a capacity for forty to fifty people to be seated inside our tap room. We don't have any final floor plan. I tried drawing up a floor plan, but I'm not an architect, so I didn't bring that up with me. But the goal is to have the capacity for forty to fifty people to be able to be inside our tap room and be consuming our product. At first, we would not be selling beer in bottles. At first, it would all just be on draft. Once we have the demand, once we have enough people wanting our beer, we'll be able to bottle it and sell for onsite consumption. But just the scale, how small we're going to be, it's going to be kind of an evolution as the brewery progresses. I'll answer any questions you guys have as best as I can.
And just, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to let you know, we did advise him that he has to work with community development to make sure, you know, the, the first, that's another part of the process as far as bill, permit approval and, and all the other stuff that goes with it. So it's kind of at the concept stage right now.
Alderman Wesley?
So I'm going to make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Pavine, Pavine, he works with the building department for the parking. He does have a little parking issue there.
A motion and a second. Any other questions? Mr. J, Alderman Jacob?
A couple of quick questions. This is going to be in the industrial park, correct?
Yes, sir. The building we're looking at right now is on Creel Drive.
Okay. Is there any visibility for the, I mean, I'm having a little bit of a hard time understanding being in the industrial park, like how you're going to get people to go in there?
Yeah.
Google.
Sorry. Yeah. A lot of breweries, especially the smaller ones, they start in industrial parks. It's cheaper to set up shop there. Also, there's also ingredient deliveries, like hops, grain, all that stuff comes in a truck. So a lot of the smaller breweries, they do start in industrial parks.
I was going to say, I'm familiar with some in Itasca, Elk Grove, Villa Park. That is kind of common, so.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, just as a general overview, what used to be unappealing space now is appealing space in the commercial market in the industrial parks because it tends to be a little cheaper. So the, the trade-off is you might not have as much visual presence on, on a Main Street Irving, but the rent's lower and people are actually looking those places. They're a little out of the place in the city, in Itasca, in Roselle, and Villa Park. Yeah, so.
Warrenville.
It's kind of a general trend.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Maybe to clear up Alderman Eugene Wesley's question, what are your hours of service going to be, or what are you looking at?
Ideally, we'd all be open Thursday through Sunday.
Time?
Thursday would be probably five or six until around ten.
So if five or six in our industrial park is pretty much empty, so.
Right. The, the goal is to be.
Shouldn't be a problem.
We want to be open because we know there's high traffic with the trucks.
No, no, I'm saying you're asking, you asked about parking. I said to address your question about parking. In the evening, the industrial park's pretty empty. You shouldn't have a problem with parking along the street.
No, you can't park along the street in industrial parks. There's no parking.
I do realize you can park all the time.
There are also.
Any other questions? Alderman Messina?
Just a few questions. Is this kind of your first stab at this kind of establishment?
Yeah, yeah, I've been a home brewer for about six years, but actually opening up commercially, this will be my first time doing it. I've lived in Texas actually the past six odd years too, and I've helped out at local breweries down there. I've, you know, done odd jobs for them, but this would be the first time opening a business.
If you don't mind, Chairman, just a few more follow-up questions. So tanks, I'm assuming, are you looking at something more elaborate like tanks, kind of like a Two Brothers concept in Warrenville?
I haven't been to Two Brothers. I'm not familiar. There will be tanks, you mean like CO2 tanks for the, the air or fermentation units?
Or even like a ram restaurant has those monster tanks.
Oh, right, right. Those, those would be onsite, but not for the public to see. They'd be behind a locked door for, you know, employees only where the beer is made. We, we could allow for brewery tours if, you know, people want to, but we would definitely have it sectioned off so people couldn't get at it.
Go ahead. Alderman Messina, follow-up.
Yeah, I just want to be clear too. You said that there'd be the option to, for them to consume meals, but there would be no kitchen space.
Correct. People could order pizza or subs or whatever they want to do and bring it in.
Kind of the same concept. I think that new Beer World or something like that in Schaumburg and in Lincolnshire where.
Yeah, and Palliana and Microphone, they, they allow outside food.
Okay, okay. Just trying to get an idea. I like the concept. It's, I just wanted to get some clarification. Okay. Thank, I'm good, Chairman. Thank you.
Any other questions? We've got a motion and a second. Mayor? So it sounds like we're going to, this is going to pass. Question is, before we open the license, how long do you envision, how long do you think it's going to take to open up?
That's a tough question with the, the federal licensing that goes into it.
Right, got to finalize everything. Okay.
Yeah, it traditionally takes anywhere from six to twelve months.
Right. That's what I was, okay. Chief?
And so this committee item won't come back to council until there's a.
Until he's ready to go, but he'll have a letter of intent that he has a license once he's ready to go. Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yeah, Mr. Wesley, do you intend on getting a gaming license for?
No, sir.
Video gaming?
No interest in the gaming.
It is allowed, though.
No, I, right, I know it's allowed. I just wanted to ask if you're going to get it, or just to let him know he needs to sign up right away.
Alderman Jacob?
Not, not really knowing too much about breweries, but does the health department kind of monitor? The health department's one that monitors it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions? Eileen, would you take a roll call, please?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Welcome to Wooddale.
Welcome to Wooddale.
Congrats.
Congratulations, young man. To you and your family.
Appreciate it.
Long live the legacy.
Yeah. Appreciate it all.
I believe there's another item here, a resolution seeking to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wooddale and the Wooddale Park District for certain police services.
I make a motion to approve.
So good.
Any questions? Alderman Jacob?
Couple of quick questions, Chief. Is this, is this also for the, just how we have police there all the time during the day? Is this part of that agreement or no?
No, are you talking about like the park ranger program?
Yeah, like the park ranger program. Is this part of that or this is not?
Go right ahead, Chief.
No, that's covered under a separate intergovernmental agreement where those people are actually hired out by the park district and then they're covered by all the park district liability and their insurance and everything. This is just reimbursement for the crossing guards that we employ. It's about a little bit over a third of the cost of those. And, and then for weekly bank runs that we make for the park district to the bank. It covers about forty-five minutes of our time to make sure we're reimbursed for that.
Do you have a follow-up question?
I have a follow-up. And then the people.
I, I'm sorry, you could ask it, but no, go ahead. Alderman Jacob?
Basically, is it our police officers then that would be doing the escorting or would it be the ranger?
Chief?
It's our people.
Okay, so Wooddale's, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion. We have a second. It's a roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, are items to be considered at future meetings? Alderman Sizmarsky?
Mayor, can you tell me who's on the joint committee for Wooddale Park District and the Wooddale City Hall? I have a question for them regarding, I had a couple of businesses ask why they, they need to, they want to know why they can't hire, come down for daycare, for E C E C, their businesses here? I just want to know if we can let the two, two joint council members.
Jeff, you want to write that down, pass it to the.
It's like a daycare school, yeah. It's early education. But their businesses in Wooddale, they should be allowed to drop their kids off and conduct business and tell.
Oh, you're saying?
Right now it's closed to residents only. We need to open, we need to open it to businesses that do business in Wooddale. It'd be business friendly. It's not fair to exclude them.
That reside in Wooddale, basically?
Correct. Well, they don't reside in Wooddale, but they do business in Wooddale.
They work in Wooddale.
Was that a question?
No, that manager made a note.
No, it's just for information.
Oh, okay.
Pass it on.
Any other questions then? Let's take a roll call.
No, just no roll call.
I have no idea. There you go. Any other items to be considered? All right, the motion for adjournment then? And the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? The ayes will have it. We are adjourned.
Call the Public Works Committee to order. With the minute taken, reflect that everyone's still here. Need approval of minutes from Public Works Committee, regular meeting, January twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, at seven thirty.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Next, we got a report, recommendation for a policy of installation of streetlights within the city residential area. That's my motion. Any questions? Mr. Sorrentino?
The question I have would be the, from a safety aspect, I would like to end the residence petitions and let it fall under public safety and place them accordingly, as been discussed in the past. Because what I read here was we need so many votes by the, or a petition by the residents on the particular block. And I don't think anybody who would object would be responsible or take the liability if there was a crime committed because it was too dark there.
Mr. York or Mr. Murmurs, do you have any questions on that?
We don't have any questions. All we did was the council asked for us to put the current policy in. I know there's been some rumblings and grumblings about modifications to the policy. So we're here to follow whatever direction is the council heads in. If we were to do what you're suggesting, we would have to then budget for some sort of program within a C I P or whatnot.
Well, I understand Mr. Sorrentino's question too, and I'm perturbed at it myself. I spend my, my, my harder time walking my ward, getting people to sign up on intersection lights and don't return a survey. It's, you know, it is a safety issue, whether or not they have kids or not, walk dogs or not, walk the yard, walk the, walk the block or not. Intersections should all have lights, at least a streetlight. Mr. Wesley?
So my proposal, and, and I understand, correct me from the sidewalk, if you have sidewalks to the street, how much does the city own from a, do they own from a street to the sidewalk if they have sidewalk? Or how, how much easement do we have in the front? That's the first question.
It's, it's dependent upon some things, but in generality speaking, city right-of-way is sixty-six feet. So that is thirty-three feet from the center line of the street to either way. So whether or not there's sidewalk there or not, it doesn't make, it doesn't matter. The only issue with sidewalks comes in is if the sidewalk is like on Dalewood where the sidewalk is closer to the street than it normally is. Normally, there's a, it's curb, ten feet of green space, sidewalk, a foot back of sidewalk, that's where the right-of-way stops. That, when, if that's not the case, then it makes it a little bit more difficult to put streetlights in. We may have to do some sidewalk modifications, which then again adds more cost to the project. But in general speaking, it's thirty-three feet from the center line in the, in either direction.
I have, I have two, if you don't mind. So I agree with both of them with the survey. It's not working right. It's just not. So I would do a recommendation is that we put so much away for every year. And, and I don't know how many, how many streetlights we could do. Maybe we alternate, we do a street, two streets in each ward. One year we do, say we, I'll say two and three ward, next one, one and four ward the following year, until we get the streets done. And to me, we got the right-of-way for the front, so we should be able to put these streets up, these lights without any permission because we own the right-of-way.
We do have a city like fund, correct?
I'm, I'm trying to read.
The, um, the, the fund right now, I believe for the next coming year was, it was thirty thousand. I believe there was a slight modification to next year's, maybe fifty, up to like fifty thousand. Just for fun, I sat and did a little calculations. Alderman Sorrentino's ward and Alderman Woods' ward, Mary Jane, Erman, Potter, Gilbert and Forest Preserve from Prospect to Mill, and then Gilbert and Forest Preserve from Prospect to Addison. The total cost in that rough, throwing it against the wall, is about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. To put twenty-seven light poles in, six control boxes, and almost ten thousand feet of wire. And that's not doing any restoration work or anything like that. That is doing, having some design work done. So we're talking about a half a million dollars to do ten thousand linear feet of road.
Do I follow up?
Was that all the streets in that area that don't have lights, or is that how you do that?
I looked at the map and I just took an area.
Okay.
Just, that, that would do everything basically somewhat south of Potter and west of Addison Road. That would kind of clean up that area. But then, like I've said before, there's ComEd, there's not ComEd, there's ours. So this would be basically ours intermixed with ComEd's, which causes some issues because on the corners, there will be ComEd lights and mid-blocks are, are city lights. We'd have to have multiple control boxes, wires that are our wires versus their wires, those kinds of things, so. But that's just kind of a rough estimate of, and I didn't do every street and the, and every entire ward. Like Ward Four, everything's in the rear yard, there's no ComEd lights in the front. All those would be basically our poles, which are more expensive.
I know we had looked at this a while back and it sounds like what's being proposed would be a complete overhaul, right? So I thought when we talked about this policy change and the way I read it was, how do we get better at getting responses? I know that was our biggest, at least if I speak for myself and Alderman Jacob, was we send a survey, if we don't hear from them, oh, well. But I thought we were working on a process of, we have a different form of communication of either in person, whatever it might be. And I know it, it's time-consuming, or we have a public hearing. But I thought the whole goal of this was just to make sure we got a response, one way or another, from all the, the parties.
Mr. Murmurs?
I think you're correct and Alderman Sorrentino's correct. We've heard both over the past year or two at least, so.
You want to know which side?
Where do you want to go?
Yeah.
Well, one of the, one of the things that, having a public hearing, okay, we could do that. I mean, that's one option. But when we have open houses for major road construction projects and on a street.
You don't get a lot.
I had, you know, maybe a third of the people show up. When we did the Squaw Creek Open House, I had two people show up out of, out of ten homes.
What about a reverse nine-one-ones?
There's reverse nine-one-ones and all those kinds of things. Those are all options. But if they don't want to respond, we can't make them respond.
I just get a lot of people that say, I didn't know. I, you know, and they.
Well, then they don't read the letter that I sent them. Because they just threw it away.
I'm just saying.
Or they're telling you one thing and they're not doing the other, and they're not.
My, my only ask of it was, can we give other options? Right now, I go back to them and I say, sorry, we, you didn't send your letter. And if I could say, we sent you a letter, we sent you a reverse nine-one-one, we came to your door, sorry. You missed, oh, we gave you three forums to express, given, give your opinion. That to me, I could feel better with, but when we just sent out a letter and good luck, that, that was my only process improvement recommendation. I know it's taxing on you guys. I get that. I just, I respectfully, I think we're on the same page. We want to add more lights. I just, I agree.
I want to remove section one of the ordinance.
What's that?
I want to remove section one for the request for streetlights and take it out of the residents' hands and put it in the council's hands. Because when someone gets murdered, robbed or raped, then I want petitions to go out.
So one other thing we talked about too, and Alderman Sizmarsky reminded me, so I won't take all credit for it, but we talked about a community service officer going to the door as well. That was another option.
Yeah, get rid of the request instead of the.
Yeah, instead of having a request, have the community service officer. I just want to have different forms of additional forms of engagement, to at least try to get an answer.
Mr. York?
So I guess, right now, I think we're, we're stuck between two different, two different worlds.
Right, right, right.
You're still wanting the residents to have input in whether or not they want it or not. Alderman, or Alderman Sorrentino wants to just say, we're putting them in, we'll figure out where to put them in, we'll figure out the money to put them in.
Make a motion. He should just make a motion.
But the problem is that time and time again, we've spent our time walking door to door and they tell you yes to your face, the mail comes, they throw it away or they don't return it. Nine out of twenty, send it back.
And we, we received.
Then they say, why didn't you do it? Because you didn't return your stuff. I never got one. Yeah, you, you did. I saw the, I saw the mail went out to you. So you didn't get it. So by having a C S O come, instead of mailing it to them, like a certified letter, this, they, they can come, the C S O can come to the door with the survey, do you want the light or not? Bring it back. Mr. Woods?
Why can't we just eliminate the second layer of security? If you get the petition, it turns it in, they need thirty people on the block, thirty people signed. It's a done deal, unless we're saying whoever collected the petition's a liar and wrote it down. I mean, at the other end, we want to put the lights in anyway, so why can't we just eliminate that second procedure of sending out a letter to somebody and then they got to verify the fact that they sent it?
Can we add a notar? When they, on those surveys, like let's say I wanted to collect one for an area, is there, do they need to be notarized?
Yes.
Something that kind of right there.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's notarized.
If you're going to trust the person that's. Doing it. We, we want to put them in anyway, so it's not like somebody's going to, they're swindling us out of a light. Right?
Mr. York?
So, yes, there are, the letters are time-consuming, not just for you guys that are going back and asking them. I mean, I have staff time involved. We have mailings involved. The problem is when, and you guys have all gone out and got people to sign stuff for you for your elections or whatever. Hey, will you sign my petition? Sure. Do, 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 do. Here's my address. Do I know what I signed? Was I told what I was signing? And then plus, well, and then when we send out the letters and we get the response back and we compare those to the petitions, we find that things are different. So the big thing with this is where are we putting the lights? It's kind of like, where are we putting the Parkway trees? I don't want them in front of my house. You can put them anyplace else except for in front of my house. So we have a Parkway tree issue because we don't, we allow people to opt out of the Parkway tree program. We put streetlights in front of people's house and now they're calling you and saying, you put a streetlight in front of my house, I don't want it there. I've never wanted it there. It's, I've lived here for forty years. There's never been a streetlight in front of my house. We don't need it. I don't know why you put it there, but you put it in front of my house and it shines in my window. So that's an issue. And you shake your head, but you're going to get that phone call. I'm going to get that phone call. The mayor's going to get that phone call.
And that's an issue with, I can understand your issue, but when I, don't waste my time when I walk my ward. I do ask everyone that signs that petition, if it's got to be in their street, hey, it might be here, would you be willing to put it in your street, in your, in your yard or in your right-of-way? I don't go around just blindly asking them, say, sign this, yes or no, just sign it. I make them tell me, do you want it, would it, if it was possible, would you have it in your yard?
Yes, but we know from.
And I give you checks, you know that.
We, but we know from your ward that people are flip-flop by the time they send back in their, send in their thing. So that happens and that's truth.
We do go through the effort, so it's not like, I mean.
I'm not saying that.
You guys aren't walking the ward, we are. I mean, I'm, it's.
Yeah, but we're the ones doing the work on the other side.
I know, and you're doing the backup stuff, but walking door to door is not your job, it's our job. So if we're putting forth the effort, you know, we should at least bypass one of the ordinance, one of the, one of laws. Mr. Jacob?
Every, every year, we always had the, the money, we have always had people put streetlights up, correct, for the amount that we budget?
There, there have been years that we have used the money and years that we haven't.
I mean, I would, you know, I would agree with Alderman Sizmarsky and Alderman Messina, but I would say that, you know, if there is one that's unaccounted for and nobody signs for it, then I would say that maybe P D kind of knows the darkest streets in town. Maybe P D say, okay, we need to look at whatever street, wherever, and just put the, put a, put a light up there. I mean, again, they're driving. I mean, again, they're driving the street at night, they know what areas are pitch black.
Um, okay, so, we realize that there are dark spots in town, and I think everybody understands that. So, that's not, that's not the issue that we have, it's how do we go about putting the lights in? We did a one-off in Ward One. That was a, over a six thousand dollar light, because it, you don't get the quantity of, yeah, you approved it, so. Um, we don't get the quantity of scales by doing one-offs, a lot of places. So, we want to, we don't want to scratch the one-offs, okay? Now, if we have to put in one-offs, then that's, that's what we have to do. But it would be easier if we did, um, projects where we could go out and do either a large section or multiple streets together, where we can have it designed, make sure everything is right, and have one control box instead of doing a control box for this one, and a control box for this street, and a control box for that street. So, there's a way to do this, and we just need to know how you want to do it. If you want to light up the town, like we've talked about, and you want us to come back with a proposal on how to do that, I'd be more than happy to do that. But, we've got, we've got to figure out if we want to just, we're going to light them up, and we're going to take out all of section one, and don't worry about what anybody wants to do, or if we still want people to have involvement, and if we do want people to have involvement, how are we going to do that?
Mayor?
Yeah. Matt, I don't think, I think everybody wants lights. Personally, I get many calls about lights, seniors, parents, their kids are walking home from practice at night, you know, the seniors, you know, got people driving through, they're coming out of their garages, walking to their doors, it's dark. We need to, I, I like lights, personally. The question becomes, what's the correct plan? I don't think tonight they're going to decide and tell you which way to stack them or whatnot. I, I think we have to have like a workshop on this, so we can actually discuss this properly.
So, Matt, from your experience, had, so part of what I thought about, we do currently today do a street sufficiency study, figure out which streets are the worst, very unbiased way. Is there, maybe, chief, maybe you've heard of it, maybe we do a streetlight study that then ranks the streets by darkness, by risk, whatever that might be, there's certain variables. And then we start to build that, excuse me, build that into a capital improvement plan. This way, much like the streets are, are decided on, we decide on the lights the same way. So, that would be my recommendation.
Where we go all intersection, make sure all intersections are lit first.
Yeah, how, right, or we can do a modification to that, but I just want to take the bias out of it. I think, I agree, even though I, I do like this plan currently, uh, I think it's open for bias, right? So, maybe, I don't know, maybe for just my recommendation, that you guys could do some research and see if any other towns have a similar kind of study.
Mr. Wesley?
Well, I think that's a good idea, um, and I think, um, working with, um, the chief, with some of his, his, his crime data, or let's call it that, um, if there's no lights there, and there's a light at one end of the street and a light at the other end of the street, I don't need to see, I don't need to judge every single street, because it's, it's either light or it's dark, and it's, it's not, this isn't rocket science.
Yeah.
Um, but by taking those areas and kind of overlaying them with the crime data, um, that he has, we should be able to come up with a pretty, pretty easy, um, down and dirty plan, and be able to map things out and, and rank them from one to, you know, four hundred, and then try to figure out how many lights need to go on each street to make it work right, and, you know, a rough estimate. We, I mean, I, I would think that for, if that's the case, then, um, the council should, my recommendation would be to put this policy on hiatus, um, until that ranking comes out, and then, um, for F Y-
Twenty twenty.
Twenty-one budget, C I P budget, then we'll have a good plan where we can come forward and say, yes, we're going to need, you know, seven million dollars over the next ten years to do this project.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I was going to say, I'll make a motion to direct, uh, staff to come up with a plan and a couple options, along with, uh, how much those options would cost.
Second?
Mr. Wesley?
I have one question. So, right now, in, in our policy now, if, if we reconstruct a whole street, you said the tear up and the grass and all that. When we reconstruct a whole street, we have a policy up here that, unless that changed, and I don't remember it, they get, they get sidewalks, curbs, and gutters.
Total reconstruction.
Total reconstruction. When did that change?
Well, I don't believe it's changed, because, um, we just did four streets in Ward Two. They, none of them got curbed and gutted, another one got sidewalks. Now, I understand that, that may have been a little bit of a different one, um, but right now, we're not doing reconstructions either. So, if you want a policy that states that, um, all of our, uh, road projects right now are grinding overlays, so we're not doing any, um, total recons.
Well, but we, I'm sorry, we will be doing total recon over by Georgetown, and those streets are going to be redone. Those aren't going to be regrinding, resurfacing, am I right for flooding?
Yes.
Those are total reconstruct.
Yes.
Okay.
But that's not part, that's not, um, a road project, that's a stormwater project, so it's different.
So, you get the street tearing up, you're going to replace the street, why not look into putting streetlights in the area already? You already got the engineering going on it, I mean, I just, I agree with these guys, whatever way they want.
And that's fine, if that's where everybody wants to go, then we'll go there.
Mayor?
No, I was just going to say, so the Ward Two streets to four streets, if we were to put in more concrete, would have issues with, uh-
With floodplains.
With the floodplain stuff, that's why the sidewalks, same thing at Royal Oaks, when we went over there, some people wanted the sidewalks, once they saw that the sidewalks were going to be about seven, eight feet away from their front doors, because of the way it was working, the homeowners were in the- Right, no, but it was really close to your front door, and that's why we chose not to.
To direct staff to come up with a plan with a couple different options, along with the cost of those options.
Roll call?
Just a quick question, so, while we are coming up with new options, are we still following the program as-
Fiscal year, yeah. So, we're planning fiscal year twenty twenty-one, then? Twenty, twenty, twenty-one?
No, so, if somebody comes and asks you tomorrow about a streetlight, we're still moving forward with the current policy?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Reluctantly, yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries. Items to be considered for future meetings, Ward Two, Three, Stormwater Project, March fourteenth, Fiscal Year Twenty Streets Program, March fourteenth, Senior Grass Program in the winter, and Fifty-Fifty Sidewalk Program winter. Anything else to be put on?
And chairman, I'd like to add one, a code change consideration for a fence variance. Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll add that, since we don't have building and zoning, I'll put it in.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
For what? Yeah, motion for adjournment? Oh, Jeff, go ahead.
Just one final note, just a reminder, I know we're lucky tonight and have an early meeting, but remember, the next committee meeting is the budget hearing, so you'll get your electronic versions of the budget, um, tomorrow, and then hard copies, uh, the following week. He's probably printing them off right now, so I'm sure the meeting on the twenty-eighth won't be forty minutes. That's all I have.
Yeah, motion adjourned?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.